Let's start with the meeting for this February 13th meeting of the Town Council of Washington, Virginia. I do have an amendment to the agenda, so we will be deferring action on C. and logic tax holiday. I'll make a motion that you amend the agenda and that instead we substitute in C. a discussion of the proposed boundary line adjustment between the town and the county relative to piece property commonly known as Rush River 2.
Do you speak in the microphone?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Next, we have the approval of the amendments from January 7th. Any additions or edits?
For the January 7th, there's one edit that I'd like to make, and that is on page four or five. As I recall, that we created the trust account to enable the town to receive taxes up with contributions. That really is the main part. In your comments, you said that the purpose, that one of the purposes that you saw, and perhaps the main purpose, was the restoration and preservation of the town hall. But as I recall from the minutes, it, the tax deductible contributions can be received through the trusts for other purposes that make them up.
That's correct.
We could add the way to including tax deductible contributions, including for the restoration or?
Yeah, or including, but not limited to.
You just want to strike for restoration and preservation.
No, because I think that was the initial intent. I think if you could put that including, but, or what you just said.
Finally, two machines. All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. The amendments for the January 9th council meeting.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Gene seconds.
Gene seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the mayor's report, things have gone on since last week. We hosted a business roundtable the first Friday in February. I know it was reasonably well-attended. Got some great viewpoints from the business community about things that we could do to continue to encourage growth, who was able to join us representing the Gay Street. It was great. You know, I don't think there were any particular surprises, but some good feedback. Certainly, the effort by the town and by our boards and commissions to try to improve our process for approving different projects and making sure we get on, get down to that 90-day goal was certainly, was a point that was well-made by the business community that they would love to see that, so look forward to work with my chairman, I think I have, I know they are standing about. The other part was about, a little about infrastructure, so there was a strong desire to see what we could do about the sidewalks in town, or a sidewalk in town, particularly on the, I guess that would be the west side of Main Street, extending it down, patios and down those, you've got good coverage along the, what is that, you know, sort of a commercial district of the town. So I know, I've talked to Fred about that, he's been interested in that, to see if there's what, depending on the community input, see if there's some federal funds available to help us do that. The other part was about this general duplication of the town, which I know the Washington planners have been trying to do their best to help us along that process, and we want to see what we can do as we head into the spring to even further enhance those various projects around town, and see what the town can perhaps do to help right some of those efforts, with some routine maintenance. Drew, anything you can think of?
No, I commend the concept of bringing this all together. I think it was a really good first discussion, hopefully one of several in the future going forward, then to build out the business community here.
I think one other point that was raised repeatedly is the possibility for, obviously another food establishment, we hope we see a comeback in the location used to eat to list. I know the conversations are continuing there, and also, one time ways to encourage some other sort of retail in town, so you know, something else for, for us while we're in town to see patrons of. And so, it's actually part of the reason we're going to defer the discussion about tax holiday is to really sort of think a little harder, there's been a lot of conversations since then about exactly how to structure that, and see if there's some way that, while we don't tax retail operations in town, whether there's some way we can encourage those through some sort of program, and also to sort of further play with exactly the mechanisms of how we make that, make that effect, and make a really an impact for business who did want to, who did want to come to the town. So we look forward to having, starting that conversation in March. If there's anybody here tonight who wants to make comments during the public meeting about their initial thoughts, we welcome those as we refine and get ready to throw the pitch in March. And I think that that largely concludes the mayor's report. Obviously, we've also changed the agenda this evening to talk about the boundary line adjustment. Our partners on the board of supervisors have put the ball back in our board, I think, in a very positive way, separating the two issues that we need to deal with, with TES on boundary line adjustment, and other four, working through that tonight. I think that would conclude the mayor's report. Mount Trecher?
Well, the fastest reports in the world, we have established the two checking accounts that we've been set up, so those are done. That's it.
Mr. Kremer?
I'll say the law. Try to get close enough that people can hear me. Two things we're putting on tonight. One is, we're moving forward very well with Rush River Commons negotiations with the representatives from the developer, Phase 1. The, we had a meeting last week with them, Mr. Guyerson and I, and, you know, I think we're, we've got some revised documents, I haven't had a chance to really dig into those, but I think we are very close to getting final documents. But the biggest hurdle at this point seems to be that the post office property has been sold to an out-of-state outfit, which is, well, the owner lives in Florida, so Mr. Foot found an address and sent him a letter like last week, and so we will look forward to possibly hearing from the owner of that property now with regard to the road maintenance agreement, because that's one of the issues that needs to be resolved, how that road can be maintained. It continues to be town-owned road. Just to remind everybody that property is owned by the town in fee simple, it is not a dedicated road, it is certainly not a VDOT-operated road, but it could be brought up to VDOT standards and dedicated at some point in the future, subject to the usual caveat such as, would it need a turnaround at the end, and that sort of thing. But we did have a discussion about what Plan B would be if we can't get a road maintenance agreement, and the only other thing on the road maintenance agreement I'll just mention is, Mr. Mitchell's attorney has not been entitled yet, and understand that he's not been able to do so. The second thing I want to report on is actually in your agenda packet, we got a letter from the Virginia Resources Association Authority that indicated, confirming what they told us in the public, is that it's okay to proceed, we're extending sewer to the fire station, and that that is not going to be any kind of, is not going to put your financing agreement in any kind of jeopardy to do that. So, stand ready to answer any questions? What, I guess the only question I have is if, is the, for the road maintenance agreement, is the, is the owner, I understand that there's a delay in Mr. Mitchell's attorney being able to get access, but is the, only foresee an obstacle, or certainly one where we don't really know where the resolution may end, is the new owner of the post office? That's, yeah, that's the black box at this point, we've just got to go communication with them at this time. As I understand, these are the postal, the Washington postal. Okay. Did they find out the same way we did?
Yes.
Yes. I think the postal service would be a little more efficient than that, owns the property.
Yeah.
You think the postal service would be a little more efficient with what they, you know, with who owns the property they're raising from?
So I think we all found out through the property transfer in the Rattanet News.
Exactly.
Thank you, Rattanet News. It's information.
Thank you, Mr. Guyerson. Steve.
I'll come to the mic so everybody can hear me. Thank you. My report's in front of you, I'll be happy to take any questions. My comment is persistent pay, so we have a number of permits at the beginning of the report. Demolition permit for the middle street gallery structures was issued, a permit for construction, temporary construction trailer was issued to Rush River Commons. The ARB approved plans for Cook's Cottage, renovation of Cook's Cottage, and issued a certificate of appropriateness, and Rush River has submitted plans for Phase 1 for lighting, to the, lighting for the site, and that'll go to the ARB at its next meeting toward the end of the month. Just my comment about persistence, the Rush River plans have been approved and signed off on, pending some of the things Mr. Krim is working on. We've received Asbilly Post Office survey of the post office plan after many months, and we've received the Asbilly site plan from Little Washington for the parking court behind patios. My only other comment is, over to your left is some of the mapping work that we've put together, you might be able to use it, over to my left, you might be able to use it for some of our discussions later today, and on the back flip side of that is an aerial photograph I put together that shows basically the corporate limits of the town, so that's the base of the mapping that the planning commission will be getting into later this month, later this year. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Brad is the lone representative of the committee. I'll give you some company.
We're continuing to move forward with our meters. I think we're down to the last many parts, four. One of those will be done in July, when that property is not in need of water, because it's going to be vulnerable. We've had the tanks at the pump house painted, so those are in a little bit better shape. I've got to work on getting our quotes for replacing the generator. I've got one photograph that needs to go back to someone, so they can give us the number. I'm also going to be reaching out to Steve Pletzko and from Rush River. We had a discussion about the taps for the water service for the development. They want to do those in August, and I really think they need to be done sooner than that, because where the taps are going to go will be under the widened light lane. So I want to coordinate so that we can do those, and then they don't widen light lane and then go dig it up for the water taps. So I'll be getting with him to get that coordinated as well as.
If only you could find him.
I can reach him, I can reach him, so.
He's joking about that, he's in the bathroom right now.
So, so I'll be talking to him a little bit about that, and then as we start moving towards issued budget discussions, I'm going to start reaching out to a lot of the engineering firms to try and get some estimates of cost to do engineering on two or three tasks related to our water system, and try to have those numbers in the budget.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. So on behalf of the planning, we have to hold on to meetings. The first one we held was on January 23rd, when the town council asked us to deliberate on two issues, one, both of which will be discussed in a public hearing, but one was on the changes from wording in the ordinance to make it clear that all buildings in the town, including those owned by the town, are subject to ARB review, and we made a proposal on that. And then we were asked to look at the zoning village services and look at amending that to exclude housing. We had a very good discussion, and we actually came, we thought that that was not the best way of including the category that would exclude housing, and so instead, we proposed that if the town wanted to have a zoning that excludes housing, it would create a whole new zoning category called Village Commercial, rather than begin to change the zoning on existing properties and affecting existing property owners. So we forwarded that to you, we'll have a discussion on that today. And we just met earlier today, in which we just voted to elect our various officers of the chair, vice chair, and secretary, and we talked a little bit about how we will roll out the review of the comprehensive plan going forward, and we'll have discussions. Obviously, with town council on that going forward. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't think we've got a rep from the architectural review board here tonight, so we'll have a meeting this week, or this month anyway.
They are, are they?
They did. They did.
They did. They made it.
They made it.
Oh, you said they made in June, right?
No, they didn't. Anyway, it's not important, we don't have a report from the ARB.
You have the minutes.
There being no old business, we'll move on to new business, and this is the question. We will handle an appointment to the planning commission. We asked for letters of interest at our last meeting, and we only were in the receipt of one, but very happy to receive one from my neighbor, Indivin David Pennick, who has stepped forward to serve, and so I would, I would move, we appoint him to the planning commission and ask for a second.
Awesome.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Just to say that the planning commission would be delighted, David joins us. Delighted and excited.
Noted. With that sterling endorsement, I'll promote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations, David. You'll still have to go see the clerk of justice for one, if you're officially in. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing of the planning commission regarding the text amendment to the zoning ordinance, and you'll forgive me at this point, I had to go through a little bit of the script, just to make sure that we're, keep on the right side of Mr. Krim. So, we are holding a public hearing tonight on a zoning ordinance amendment, and will take public comments. The planning commission will jointly hold its public hearing with us. I'll briefly explain the rules for these public hearings, and then invite the planning commission chair to call the planning commission order. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear from interested members of the community about the advisability of making the proposed change in the zoning ordinance. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and limit your comments to the impact of the proposed zoning amendments on the community. Matters such as parking, traffic, compatibility with existing structures, and noise are all appropriate topics for comment. Speakers must direct their comments to the council and the planning commission, not to the audience. Madam Chairman, I invite you to call the planning commission to order.
Thank you, ma'am. I call the planning commission to order. A quorum is present, I'm delighted to say. So I now open the planning commission's public hearing on the proposed zoning text amendment as described by the man.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I now open the town council's public hearing on the same matter. We will first hear a presentation by Mr. Steve Guyerson, the town zoning administrator, at which I will invite members of the public to come up to the podium and present their comments.
Thank you. I think earlier, our planning commission chair's report basically summarized the planning commission action, and I'm going to go over that just briefly, and then we can talk about the ordinance amendments itself. So the town council asked the planning commission on January, early January, to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance to address three items, to provide for temporary zoning of property brought in the town by annexation or otherwise. They also asked to remove residential uses from the village service district, and for the planning commission to make a recommendation to town council, which they did tonight, which the chair did before you tonight. And then they also asked that we remove any exemption from the architectural review board of town-owned property in historic districts. So those were the three guiding principles of the ordinances. The planning commission, as the chair mentioned, discussed these at great length, and tonight before you, the amendments go over those three items. I'm not going to go into them individually. The only one that the planning commission didn't act on, didn't make a recommendation on, was provision for temporary zoning of property bought in, brought into the town by annexation. They also, as was reported earlier, felt that the best way to accomplish the goal set by the town council for the planning commission was to create a separate district rather than tinker with the existing village service district. So news, in your package tonight is an ordinance to create a new zoning district, Village Commercial, that pretty much parallels the Village Service District, excluding housing. So I'll stop there and let you continue. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Mr. Guyerson.
Thank you.
All right. Members of the public, have any comments? The property.
I'm just curious if someone can explain to me what the rationale behind eliminating housing in that part of the town, as near as I can tell, just that part of the town. I think that it probably is in contradiction of the comprehensive plan of both the town and the county, which encourages developing, including housing in village centers, and some just curious why, what the reasoning behind this is.
So I can't speak for the town council, I'm led to sit and forward instructions to us, I can only speak for the planning commission? And we did not rule in any way on new land being brought in. So we did not say new land has to be brought in as Village Commercial. What we did was say, create a potential zoning category called Village Commercial, which would be parallel to Village Services. Village Services has all the same things plus residential. Village Commercial has the same things as Village Services, except it excludes residential. We didn't apply it to anything, as Mr. Guyerson said, we felt that decision was for the town council to make. When you apply that category, which has created that category, should there be a decision to apply it in the future?
So the question, it's still, what contributed, what had, was that information in there?
We were asked by the town council to convert an existing zoning to, which is Village Services, to a zoning that excluded residential. That would have taken Gay Street and some of Main Street, which now is on Village Services, and excluded residential on those streets. We believe, even though it would have grabbed from the existing residential, we believe that was not the way to go because of the comprehensive plan, and for other reasons, that there are some buildings along that which are currently commercial, which you could envisage one day becoming residential. So we said, we thought there was no point in changing that existing zoning, and so there was no rationale for doing that. But should the town at any point in the future want an area that excludes residential, a zone should be created, a category, so that you have a full menu as a town, we have a complete menu of categories, but not. We choose what we want then.
I'll answer with a why, which is to say that we, looking at our, looking at our zoning, we consider the fact that we did not have a potential zone that would allow us to consider, or did never contemplate a zone that would disallow housing. Now whether or not this is applied to, whether or not there's a boundary line adjustment completed between the county and the town, whether or not, and presuming that this was applied, I think that, you know, it's fair to say, in the town at the moment, there is not, given the current development being related, going on related to housing, there is not a consensus about additional housing, and so this allows a pause in that conversation.
Art, or art, what you said.
Any other comments from the, from the public? Sheila or Nancy? There being no other comments from the public?
Thank you, ma'am. So a motion is in order to close the public hearing. The planning commission's part of the planning, public hearing. Do I have that motion from, do I have a second? I can, all those in favor? Aye. So we, the planning commission now closes our public hearing.
A motion is now in order for the council to close its public hearing. Do I have a motion? Do so.
So moved?
A second?
Second.
I'll let you guys sort of do that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The town council's motion is now closed.
Does any member of the planning commission wish to make a recommendation to the town council regarding the proposed zoning text amendment? If so, a motion would be in order. I apologize. Does any member of the planning commission wish to make a recommendation to the town council regarding the proposed zoning text amendment? If so, a motion would be in order.
I'm, I'm, as a follow-up to the recommendation that we made, that we followed in the council earlier this month, I guess, called a date of death, to adopt the new category of Village Commercial.
Introduce a new category of Village.
Yes.
And to amend the.
And to amend that any, any activity within the town, by town building is to be put before the architectural.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's a recommendation, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are we excused now?
Before the planning commission, is they want to make a recommendation with regard to the, does the planning commission wish to make a recommendation with regard to bringing in property by boundary line adjustment or other one?
No. We believe that's a political decision for the town council to make.
Thank you.
Carolyn, please adjourn.
Oh. Can I have a motion to adjourn the planning commission? So have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work on this. It's been my work.
Say bye-bye.
Oh, bye-bye. It's the first time we've had a dog and a town council.
I have only two.
Okay. All right, we have a recommendation from the planning commission before us to amend the zoning ordinance to town of Washington, adding a new zoning district called village commercial, and also to amend the text of the town zoning ordinance regarding jurisdiction of the ARB to include, so that the ARB jurisdiction now includes all town-owned buildings in the town. In practice, which we have kept up with in the past, but not, was not actually ordered. So, may one like to move for the.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt the zoning ordinance as recommended by the planning commission, as printed in document before.
And Mr. Mayor, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, and I'll go with order this time, so, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion is passed, zoning ordinance is amended. Thank you all for your work on this, and quickly, our, our planning commission for moving through the process as quickly as possible. So what we have, of course, the change to the agenda tonight was to add a discussion of the, what has come back to us from the board supervisors. At the last meeting of board supervisors, Mr. Woodson moved to separate the issue of the boundary line adjustment text itself from the issues that we had previously discussed, seven particular issues that we have discussed over the course of consideration of the boundary line adjustment. This is something we had, we had asked for, and I appreciate you taking that action and the board supporting it. What we have tonight, of course, is a series of seven. We have a clean boundary line adjustment, which includes no special provisions other than, we're all supportive of dark skies, which it remains in there. But we have seven questions that have been posed to us, or items for consideration that have been posed to us by board supervisors. And I would like to take those up, consider them, and make a series of motions, and somebody should feel free to relieve me of speaking, talking, or reading all of them, to address specifically these in legislative form. We had previously discussed in a memo, but I understand the desire and am happy to take the action to officially adopt these through legislative action. I'll go ahead and read the questions, and then we'll move on to take the motions if that works, everybody. All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I, just to clarify that the action you just took on the zoning text amendment included provision regarding the zoning of property brought into the town by boundary line adjustment or otherwise? That was, as I understood the intent of that motion, but it wasn't expressed in state.
For the ordinance?
The ordinance, yes. There was no recommendation from the planning commission, but they, they had the opportunity to make the recommendation, but I understood that the motion was to approve the zoning text amendment as of the fourth of June, which included that provision. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. Don't worry.
Everybody, please turn to Page Seven. This is in line with a motion I'm going to make tonight anyway. So Article Five, General Provisions, five dash ten, zoning of property brought into town. All properties brought into the corporate boundary of the town of Washington shall be designated as village commercial zoning district, as a village commercial zoning district.
I guess I have one question, Mr. Grim, if I can ask it of you, which is if someone, one of the things that we're looking at here is if someone's property is in distress in terms of their water, or I'm sorry, their sewer system failing, septic system failing, would they be grandfathered in as a resident? If it's resident, would they be grandfathered in?
Yes. They would be grandfathered. The process would be that you would want to process a comprehensive plan amendment potentially, and then look at the zoning of that property as it stands, which exists at use.
While it may be cleaner, Mr. Grim, is there any requirement for us to include this provision, or can we make this judgment on our own for each individual boundary line adjustment, should there be one?
You would have to adopt an entire ordinance through recommendation by the planning commission after public hearing for each one. This, the beauty of this provision is that it has a default setting, which you are going to change if you want.
Exactly, because that's the future.
Exactly.
You can change it?
Well, yes, my legislative action can change anything, it's just the, the length of the process involved, which eventually comes to question.
Yeah, so in a case out of Fredericksburg, Virginia Supreme Court said that even though the statute says you can make temporary zoning for property brought in by annexation, temporary means however long the town council wants it to be.
Actually, what you brought up disturbs me a bit, Mr. Grim, because my impression from the chair of the planning commission was that there was no mention of new property and how it would be applied. So I was surprised when I looked at Page Seven again and see that there is something here, when she seemed to say there wasn't.
What she, what the chair was saying was that there was no recommendation from the planning commission, that was a political decision that they left to the town council. I think that's a very close quotation to what she was saying. So this was, if I recall, the, the direction from the town council to the planning commission was to consider this amongst the other things that were referred to the planning commission. Because there currently is no provision. I mean, most localities have a provision that says that it would be zoned somehow. Some places it's zoned the lowest density, some places have a complicated chart showing, you know, comparing counties to town zoning and so on. So there's a number of ways to, to do that, but you don't have any provision at this point. So you would have to have some ordinance in place. Otherwise, what happens is if you annex property or bring it in by boundary line adjustment, it is unzoned. There is no zoning restriction on it whatsoever until you permanently zone it. So you can have unzoned property, you can have part of your town be unzoned, but you don't necessarily want to have that.
But as we took legislative action to do a potential future BLA, whenever that may be, presumably we get past the current, sometime in our lifetimes, there is no reason in the negotiation that you couldn't, you couldn't make this determination as part of that legislative action. So that they would be concurrent legislation, essentially.
Right, so you would have to make the boundary line adjustment, you know, potentially contingent on adoption by the town of an ordinance to provide for that particular piece of property to be zoned.
Wouldn't you have to have the ordinance, right? I mean, you can make a motion to zone something as it's coming into town.
No, it has to go through the zoning map amendment process, which requires referral to the planning commission and a recommendation, or an opportunity to make a recommendation anyway.
And any development on that plot shall be restricted to the uses allowed by right in such a zone. Pardon that, acting amendment, or action, can I make that a little, little more straightforward than a handy? Can I have a second for that?
A second.
Any discussion?
Oh, the only question I would add is that, is it worthwhile for us to make it specific as saying commercial village zone versus just commercial zone? Is this a resolution? Mr. Grim?
The best specification, there was a close one to say.
I think it's close enough to say commercial, since it's the only commercial zoning district you have, I mean, the only purely commercial one.
That also.
Just wanted, I'd just like to hear Mr. Grim's.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion is adopted. All right. Ms. Grim, do you want to do more about sharing revenue?
Oh, sure. I'm just getting wearing glasses after this cataract surgery, so anyway. Whereas the Rattahannock County Board of Supervisors during its regular meeting on six February twenty twenty-three, did request the town of Washington consider sharing any meals and lodging tax revenue generated by such businesses as may be located on the property commonly known as Rush River Commons. Two, if said property is brought into town through a boundary line adjustment. And whereas there is little legal precedent for any such sharing agreement, nor does the town wish to set such a precedent. Now therefore be resolved that shall be the policy of the town of Washington not to share any tax revenue received by the town from any business operating within the town's boundaries or other sources with any other jurisdiction or government.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I'm a little confused by the, and this is probably, Mr. Grim, I'll have to hold this, by the ending, very ending, other sources with any other jurisdiction or government? I don't.
It's a saying, I made. The, saying that the town does not wish to share any of its tax revenue with the county or with any other governmental entity such as regional government, which come into existence on the state.
So the other sources actually refers to not share, not from any business operating.
Right, so it should be from any business operating within the town's boundaries or other sources with any other jurisdiction or government.
Okay.
You're going to diagram that sentence.
Yeah, and the English professor would diagram that sentence. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion is adopted. Anybody else feel like being a believer?
Sure. The resolution pertaining to future boundary line adjustments, whereas the Rattahannock County Board of Supervisors during its regular meeting on six February two thousand twenty-three did request the town of Washington consider moratorium on future boundary line adjustments for a period of ten years from the time BLA currently under consideration by the town and the county has adopted. And whereas it is the position of the town that it should promote limited growth and infill construction in accordance with both the county's and the town's comprehensive plans. And whereas the town operates a public water and sewer system which can provide relief to county residents adjacent to the town, who may have falling, failing water or sewer systems that also support the construction of single-family homes on land that might not otherwise support such construction, i.e. property which will not pass a PERC test. Now therefore be resolved that should the current BLA agreement under the consideration by the town and the county be concluded, that it will be the policy of the town of Washington not to accept applications for BLAs from adjoining properties currently in the county for a period of five years from the conclusion of said agreement. Unless the owners of said property should present reasonable proof that the sewer system on their property is failing, or should they wish to construct a single-family home on the property adjacent to the town which has failed the PERC test. I will second. I'm making the motion.
I'll say. Any discussion? I'll follow the question. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion is approved. All right, I'll take that. Next, last one, since we, appears we also need to do one about the, we'll have one addition to this, which is apparently in our long discussion in some time about extending sewer system, or sewer system to company one, we did not actually adopt a motion that said we would do that. But they added that, it was pending the response that Mr. Grim actually just as we'd received, saying it was okay with our law orders and stuff. But I'll follow it with this, and then we'll move to that. Resolution pertaining to the jurisdiction of the architectural review board of the town of Washington, whereas the Rattahannock Board, County Board of Supervisors during its regular meeting on six February twenty twenty-three, did request the town of Washington consider exempting county buildings from review by the town of Washington's architectural review board. And whereas the town has not in practice exempted itself from the jurisdiction of its architectural review board despite language and the ordinance allowing for such an exemption. And whereas on this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-three, the town has amended the pertinent ordinance to remove any exemption for town-owned buildings and property from purview of the ARB. Now therefore be resolved, the town declines to provide relief from review by the town's ARB of any current or future county buildings located within the town. Second. Any discussion?
I think this one's important to maintain the historical integrity of the town, anyway. I know you did not put that down as a point, but I think that's an important aspect of it. And you could even say, in that last sentence, that you, that you decline to provide relief from review by the town's ARB of any current or future county or town building located within the town.
Happy to take that a minute. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion is adopted. All right, one final motion. A resolution pertaining to the extension of water or sewer services to company one of the, of the Washington Volunteer Fire Department of the town. Whereas we believe it is in the best interest of both the town and the county to provide efficient public safety services. Therefore, be resolved that the town supports the extension shouldn't be requested by the, by the company to extend sewer services to company one in the town of Washington. That's good.
A second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you said in the town of Washington, of course, it's just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Grim. Adjacent, we're not recommending, or not suggesting another BLA. Extending sewer services beyond the, beyond jurisdiction of the town of Washington to enable public safety. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion is adopted.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while we're talking about boundaries, it's come to my attention in the last year that there may be a erroneous interpretation of the town boundary on one part, I think the southeast portion of the town. And the discrepancy is significant enough, and I think it is called on all the town to suspend the resources necessary to get a survey to get that town boundary defined very specifically and once and for all. There's a nineteen fifty survey that has it two hundred feet farther to the southeast than all the other surveys have. And so I don't know whether, I guess, I don't know whether this requires a resolut, or a motion, but I would ask the town to consider it, and if you want, we can put it on the agenda for next month, for more thorough discussion, or take action now.
No, I think what we can do is just ask the town staff to get an estimate for survey for that segment, and then come back and report back just if they can consider it. I believe it's in favor of the county.
It would be in favor.
Right, yeah, they begin to get a land that's currently situated inside of town back to the county. Okay, and I think it is in order, and I'd like to recognize our, our representative for supervisor, Mr. Woodson, for his comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your work tonight. I just wanted to make sure, I believe there was, could you go to the microphone? Come on, Brad. I know. I'm studying my computer. I just, maybe I didn't hear it, but I just want to make sure that you took any necessary action on the board of supervisors' request that you would work with us on any realignment of parcels.
I guess that was, that was my first motion. I combined two of them, a single motion, just to save my voice.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right, our first motion addressed both the parcels and the permits.
Pardon me.
No, that's all right, it's a good question. There's a lot, a lot to read and listen to for the red. I mean it. I will note to the, so what I, so I guess at this point, can you just bring that up? We would, I would suggest that the council also consider a motion to approve, Mr. Krim, may I? Okay, we're all right. To approve the clean boundary line adjustment that has been presented to us by the county and is included in your package.
You make the motion, you want me to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, I'll take the question. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is adopted. Look forward to concluding with speedily, with our colleagues. Speedily. Any other, any other business, Mr. Public? All right, at this point, it's in order to open the public forum. Anybody who can speak, please come forward, be recognized. We warn you out. All right. I, there's going to be, I will close the public forum and I will ask for a motion adjourned.
I still will.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are adjourned.